The motion has been approved, five to zero. Next item on the agenda is public comment. All right, no public comment. Public meeting. Next item on the agenda is item A, ordinance, nine, 2020, an ordinance to amend water rates. I'm more than six feet away, so is it okay to take this off? Good evening.
Good evening.
Nice to be here with you all.
Nice to see you.
We're basically, we're gonna have three ordinances come up. Would it be appropriate for me to kinda just go through an overview of all three right now, and then we can act on them, obviously, individually? But that might be, if that's all right with you all. There are, we have water, wastewater, and storm water, all three. It's been a number of years since, I think, the storm water rates were established in 2009. The water and wastewater rates were established in 2011. And with respect to the water and wastewater utilities, we have a number of big projects coming up fairly quickly. The water utility has fast approaching its rated capacity in terms of, with some of the new subdivisions that have been approved, we're gonna hit that 90% peak. We're at, I think we peaked at 1.4 last year, and with the advent of some, couple of big subdivisions that are now in the works, we'll hit that one, you know, that 90% mark. So, one of the plans, imminent plans for the water utility is to find another source of water, a new well field, and they have a pretty good idea where that's gonna be, and build an additional water treatment plant. And then connect those two with the transmission main. So there's sorta three pieces of that puzzle. And we've had a series of meetings with, a working group with the town staff and Taft Law, and I think we've got a pretty good plan for that. We, with respect to the wastewater utility, we've got a couple, a handful of small projects that have overflow issues, that we want to keep item off our back on these overflow issues. So, those are projects that Jerry would like to proceed with before we get into the big project, probably six years out or so, when additional or a new treatment plant would be needed, for a number of reasons, not just capacity, but technology and NPDES requirements, unfunded mandates. So, that's sort of a long-range issue there with the wastewater, but there are a number, and we have debt outstanding in the wastewater already, as we do in the water also. But the wastewater bonds were refinanced in, I believe, 2015, I believe. And it was a program through the Indiana Bond Bank. And when you look at the coupon rates on those bonds, they seem high in today's market, but at the time that those bonds were issued, there was a significant premium that the bonds were issued at, you probably understand. And so those coupon rates are, look high, but it's not something we can refinance at this time, because it was, at the time they issued them, they'll pay out before they're callable, if you will. But, so there were tremendous savings back when those were refinanced, and all the bond bank participants in that original pool program refinanced their debt at that time. So, I just wanna get that out there. We did look at that. So we've got about $2 million of projects that we need to do compliance, regulatory compliance-wise, on these overflow issues. There's also another project that will likely be funded with developer funds, but it's also one that we may want to jumpstart, and that's an interceptor to the north side of Danville that will open up a large area for new development and so forth. And we'll need a collection main or main interceptor to serve that area. I know there are negotiations with a developer going on right now, and we're hoping that that development or that and other developments will pay that way, but there may be some advantage to getting the design of that interceptor done, because it's pretty well laid out where it needs to be. And as long as we're looking at doing some of these other projects, it makes sense to perhaps consider doing that, because we'd be doing some sort of interim financing, and then, obviously, when we get to the treatment plant project, it'll be a long-term financing. And depending on how much we get with upfront money from development, we may or may not do a long-term bond right now, but that's a possibility. Right now, I'm talking like a year from now. But we'd like to consider at least getting the design fees on the table and as part of the initial preliminary borrowing for the wastewater projects. So, we got the $2 million. That interceptor north is about a $4 million project. And again, one of the other ordinances that comes up after me is with your planning department, and we've worked with them collectively. We've had joint meetings where all of these fees and development charges were vetted. And we feel that the place that we have set for the water and wastewater, we call them system development charges, but you probably call them connection fees or acreage fees. But they're basically where you try to get new development coming in to basically buy into the equity that everybody else has paid for over the last 50 years. So that's one of the objectives, and those fees that are coming before you, after the three utility rate ordinances, it made sense to keep all those development fees in the planning department fee schedule, and so we didn't wanna really overlap. But there is coordination there, and the idea is for new development that comes into Danville, they buy into the system so that makes it fair and equitable as possible with the existing customers that have been here for 30, 40, 50 years. So, I'm kinda covering a bunch of broad overview bullet points here. The stormwater utility, those rates, again, were set back in 2009. The idea here is just to do a minor increase. We're looking at a dollar a month for the residential ratepayer. And the, well, for everybody that has one ERU or equivalent residential unit, it would be equivalent to a dollar increase. Part of that dollar is a variable charge that would vary by the number of ERUs that are assigned to a particular property. Obviously, commercial, every residential customer's one ERU, but commercial customers that have more than 3,700 square feet of impervious area, rooftops primarily, would pay additional ERUs based on the rooftop and pavement impervious area on their property. So, 50 cents of that dollar increase would vary based on the number of ERUs a given business or church or, you know, the, a lot of the not-for-profits, everybody wants to have a bleeding heart, but, you know, they have costs too, that they, user fees is a way to get some contribution towards the, you know, the cost of running the town of Danville. So, those are pretty common techniques. Again, we're going from a $3 base charge and a $3 variable charge per ERU to $3.50 base charge and $3.50 ERU. And so, we're not gonna dwell too much on that in the slides. We're gonna focus more on the water and wastewater projects and our plans there, 'cause that's where, you know, when we get out to 2026, you know, right now that plant's estimated at around $18 million. By then, it'll probably be $20 million plus or minus, you know. They're big numbers, but you're not the only community in this situation, working down in Huntingburg, and they've, they're going through about a $20 million plant expansion right now. Greenfield's looking at $40 million to do there. So, the good news is, misery loves company. You're not alone in this dilemma. But we want to be proactive so that when we get to that point in 2026, we've got a solid financial footing, we can get the best interest rates and creditworthiness as we can. So, part of this exercise will be to gradually build up to that point, keeping in mind that one of our charges for Mark was to do gradual steps and not, you know, do anything that's gonna be a rate shock for any customer or customer class. So, and with the water rates, we're, I'm gonna backtrack just a second before we get into it, but with the water rates, and this is probably a credit to your prior superintendent, Jim Russell, he's been after some sort of a conservation incentive in the rate system. And this first phase that we're gonna talk about in the water rates, we're basically proposing three phases of rates for water and for wastewater, and just one phase for the stormwater. Stormwater, they just spend what they get, and, you know, there's a limitless amount of storm drainage needs in any community, but, and I've teased Barry that, you know, he's kinda like the unwanted stepchild, you know, but at any rate, it's becoming a much bigger deal, you know, stormwater management is a big focus anymore, and all your streets and roads and curbs and, you know, it's all part of it. So, you can imagine there's a limitless amount we could generate, but we're just looking at that dollar a month increase on stormwater. On the water utility, we want to do a revenue, relatively revenue-neutral. We'll pick up a little bit of income in this first phase, but not too much. But it's gonna put some incentives for the people that are causing these big peak demands in the summertime. It will have a very nominal impact on traditional residential usage, you know, that's, say, 10,000 gallons or less. You've got minimum customers that use 1,000 gallons of water or less. Probably about 20% of your residential customers are using less than 2,000 gallons a month. And then you've got an average user is about 3,500 to 4,000 gallons. 4,000 gallons is sort of the benchmark that the state grant programs and funding agencies look at and to see where that number is. You're far below what those thresholds are for getting grant funds and things like that nature, so, I mean, that's bad, but it's good that your rates are well below those levels. So, anyhow, the Indiana Code sets out a rate-making formula. The water utility is governed under IC-8-1.5-3-8. I don't mean to sound impressive here. These are the only two code sites that I can remember, because I use them all the time. But the wastewater utility falls under the Public Works Statute, which is 36923, but you impressed with all that, child. I did that just for you. But they set out basically the same formula for municipal utilities, and basically you've got, and these are not optional. The statutory revenue requirements, in the code it says, "The rates shall be sufficient to do this, 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 and this." The bottom two could be considered optional, but payment through the taxes is probably not optional for your general fund. So, but the cash operating expenses, having adequate working capital to pay your bills on time, and have some reserves, depreciation or capital improvement plan. We're gonna talk about, really, a capital improvement plan that involves issuing debt, because we're looking at around 10 and a half million for the water project, and about, well, two to six million out of the box with the wastewater project, and another 20 million coming up. By timing it though, out in 2026, we'll have a bond issue that'll pay out about that time, that one that we can't refinance. So, we're trying to, and we can wrap the debt around that if we need to, when we get, if we need to do something before that, but sort of the plan is to try to get these smaller projects done as soon as we can, 'cause that'll keep item off our back. And then the big project will be coming, assuming that we keep, you know, the rate of growth we're going and so forth, and just, it's gonna, it's gonna come anyway because of the technology changes and the NPDES permit requirements. But, so that's sort of the rate formula that we'll be following. Let me see if I can, technology's great when it works, isn't it? On the wastewater utility, what we're looking at is, in this first phase, we definitely wanna do the $2 million overflow projects, and we probably wanna get that design done on that north interceptor, so that we are ready to pull the trigger when demand occurs. And then we'll get that money back with these system development charges that will be coming up with the planning department ordinance. But we still have to, so whether or not we fund it with a bond, a bond anticipation note or a bond issue, now, I'm gonna talk about those two things, because just to get through the design work and so forth is a pretty big, you know, investment by the town, and rather than bleed down all your operating funds for this size of projects, and we're focused on wastewater here, we'd like to get the design going on those overflow projects and the interceptor project. And then, at some point between now and when we get out a little further, we're gonna want to get the design on the treatment plant project also. We don't necessarily have to do that immediately, but it might be something we wanna think about and at least put that option available in our, the bond ordinance, which Jules Firm's gonna be working on this, and we may bring that back for the public hearing, because all of these rates are really predicated on these capital projects coming down the pipe. And so, we will probably bring some enabling ordinances that would authorize the town to issue a bond anticipation note, and probably do one for water, one for wastewater. That would be, we could do a bond anticipation note for up to five years, and then we have to either pay it off or roll it into a long-term financing, which, on the wastewater utility, it's likely we would roll it into a long-term financing, because when we do the big project in 2026, 27, there may be some advantage just consolidating all that debt, and, you know, we'll see what funding programs are available through the, you know, the buydown and so on. But having design done puts us in a closer-to-shovel-ready situation, and so, if there are some stimulus programs that come out of this pandemic we're in right now, it puts us a little bit ahead of the game in trying to perhaps get in line for some forgivable money. They don't call it grants through the Indiana Finance Authority, they call it forgivable loans, but forgive or free, that's good. But at worst case, they have low-interest loan programs, and rates are really low right now, so, and even taxable interest rates are pretty low. We're doing some advanced refundings on a taxable basis and still coming up with savings, but at any rate, so that's sort of the layout for the wastewater utility. In phase one, we're looking at trying to generate about an additional $350,000 a year. It's about a 10% increase. And phase two is pretty close to that same level. And there'll be a phase three that will take one step towards what will ultimately be the long-term project, but we wanna make sure we're covering more than just the minimum. And we can do this in a multi-phase-in approach that you've done before, the town has done this before, and it's a better way to ease in the rates instead of hitting everybody all at once with, you know, a much larger increase. So, this would be the ordinance that's before you tonight would have a three-phase scenario where these rates would increase some, perhaps as early as the summer. And then the first quarter, second quarter of next year, we'll have to have the second step, because that's when we would be funding the long-term bond for the water utility. On the wastewater utility, both utilities, we're gonna need some front-end cash to do the design work and get the bidding documents ready, 'cause they're big projects. It's gonna take, you know, somewhere in the million, a million and a half dollar range for the water, these preliminary costs. We've got another situation we'll talk about a little bit on wastewater, since we can't pay those bonds off early. We can only do a ban for five years. We need about a half a million or 600,000, perhaps, a loan from the water utility to the wastewater utility to design those first two projects we talked about on the wastewater side. And then we would flip that to a bond anticipation note, which is a more formal, obvious financing, and Taft would be helping put, papering all that together. We'll have to, but that's one plan. I guess another plan might be if we wanted to use host funds or something like that, but I haven't cleared that with Jenny at all, and I think that that money's probably spoken for already, and we're not assuming any host money in either of these scenarios. So, I don't want you to, we wanna show that these would pay their own way. And so, we'll probably need about a million and a half, a bond anticipation note in the water, yet this, this summer, after that first phase hits, then we can go to bid in the first quarter of 2021, and at that point, we'll need to do either the full bond issue for the, that's probably likely, once we get our bids, we'll know what our real costs are, and we can, you know, right-size the bond issue. Right now, we think that number's gonna be about 10 and a half million dollars, but in the ordinance that's gonna come in a couple weeks, we're gonna have a higher number in there, just since we don't have bids yet and we don't have the design yet. We wanna make sure we don't have to, and, you know, we may have to come back and amend the bond, but amending the bond ordinance is much simpler than amending the rate ordinance. We want, we wanna get these rates in place now, so we don't have to come back and do that. And if we do have to do it, hopefully it's because we wanna lower it a little bit, because we got good bids, or because things came in better than anticipated when we do this phase one increase. And the growth that you're coming in with, you know, the new development charges, we can use those to buy the bond issue down. But we don't wanna make that call today, but we'll make that call probably for the water utility anyway, the first quarter of next year. For the wastewater utility, it may be a little bit further out. We know we're gonna need, the design work, I believe, is about 500,000 or 600,000 to do the design work on the overflow projects and that north interceptor project. It might be a little more than that, but if we could borrow even a half a million dollars from the water utility, for the wastewater utility, for a year, that gets us in that five-year window where we can use a bond anticipation note next year to pay the water utility back and to proceed with construction. And if we're just gonna do the $2 million overflow projects, we probably do a bond anticipation note then and roll that into the treatment plant bond issue. If we're gonna do the $4 million interceptor project with bond funding and the $2 million, we may want to just do a bond issue right then, have a standalone bond for those two things, and then just do a standalone bond out for 2026, 'cause I think Zach was a little concerned about doing a bond orders today for a bond issue that we may not do for six or seven years. But I think the financial plan really is predicated on hitting all those buttons, so we may put it in the bond orders to do all those things, and have, you know, where we could do multiple bans and multiple bonds and all that, but we'll be coming back to you before we do any of them, and get your blessing on each one of those phases as they come down. But, so, not meaning to ramble here too much, I need to start clearing her up here. But, I've really covered a lot of the, am I too far away from the? Can you advance it one?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just giving them an overview so that they know why the ordinance is here.
I think I've kinda covered all three of them in there. So this is the schedule of rates we have planned for the wastewater. Again, they're approximately 10% increments, and I believe on the next slide, you might have to do that, oops. This kinda shows you where you fall in the pack right now, you're way at the low end of the, this is for 4,000 gallons. That's sort of the benchmark that's used by various state funding agencies, and it's probably approximately where your average user is, maybe it's a little bit less than that, but it kinda gives you an idea. And then, the, let's see, the next slide. Let's go ahead and skip that, 'cause that's stormwater, and we've already really covered that. I think we've covered these bullet points on the need for the water project. That's where we, we need to be when we get to the point where construction is done. We're gonna need about another half a million dollars in revenue in the water utility. Phase one is really not geared to generate a whole lot of additional funding, but it's gonna put in incentive for conservation, primarily for the residential class. They won't notice much, if any, of an increase for the first 10,000 gallons that they use, but the ones that are causing the big spikes and the summer sprinkling and all that, we're giving them credit on the sewer bill, but they don't have to pay for that, but that's where we're really running into the crunch on the water, and that's been one of Jim Russell's passions for years. So, let's go ahead to the next slide. This shows you where you stand right now with the water utility rates for average customers. So, again, you're way at the bottom, and, you know, they come in stair steps, you know, you'll move up the chart a little bit, but you're not gonna be at the top of the chart or close. Let's go on to the next slide. These are the proposed water rates. Now, what we've done here is we've gone from, I think, five or six tiers to three tiers for residential customers, and then we put in that conservation rate if they get up over 9,000 gallons, which the state minimum flow standards for water utilities is 300 gallons per day. It's actually 310, but that's too hard to use with math. So, 300 gallons per day, that gets to 9,000 gallons, and that's a pretty big residential user. But you've got some that go way over that, and that's what's causing those spikes in the, in the summer, when everybody's watering their yards, and we want them to do that, especially after we build a new plant. But right now, it's really been causing, you know, tremendous spike between your average demand and your peak demand on the water, and like I say, with the new subdivisions coming on, you're expected to hit that 90% of your peak rated capacity, probably, if not this year or next year.
What are these right now?
Okay. You know what I need? Okay, you know what I need to? The, the top two tiers are pretty much the same. They're not too different. The bottom, when you get, it used to be the more you use, the less you pay. And what the incentive does or the conservation rate is when you hit a certain threshold, that rate goes up.
So, but on, but on this, it shows phase one starting in, in July?
Yes.
And, and I'm assuming that that's an increase?
Yeah, for, for an average user, for somebody using less than 10,000 gallons, it's about 3%. I think that was sort of the average increase for a residential customer in phase one. And so it's not too much different than what it is now, but it is different because we went from five tiers to, to three.
Well, that's fine. I was just curious what?
Yeah, no, that's a good question.
I wonder what 2,000 gallons was today?
2,000 gallons today is $14.08. And 2,000 gallons, I actually, I think on the next slide, let's go ahead and put the next slide on. Here, here you go. I think this is what you're looking for. This sort of shows all three phases with, compares with the current and.
So the 725 is per thousand?
Yes, that's per thousand gallons, yes.
All right, that's.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. I got you, I got you.
For both water and sewer, there's a, well, for the water utility, you have a minimum charge, which is set at 2,000 gallons. For the wastewater utility, you have a base charge. And then everything varies at a single rate block.
Okay, thank you.
For water, this is, we're not really changing the structure completely. We're just condensing it a little bit, reducing the number of rate steps. And like I say, in that first phase, if you're using less than 7,500 gallons or so, I think it's about a 3% increase is the most anybody will see there. So it's almost revenue neutral. Then phases two and three would kick in. That's where we would generate the additional half a million dollars that we're going to need to pay off the bond issue, the 10 and a half million dollar bond issue. We'll be likely looking at in the first quarter of next year, if we stay on the engineer's timeline. And so, that was a good question. I forgot I had that slide up.
Well, thank you. Well, there was a difference between, you know, what we're seeing here is per thousand.
Yes.
And then, and then that one is showing, you know, for 2,000, so.
The first two rate steps are much different.
Okay. Because that, that came out at $7.04 per, per thousand, and this is 725.
Yeah.
Yeah, very good.
Okay, and on the water, let's go to the next slide.
Can I interrupt you real quick? I just have a question. Sorry. So correct me if I'm wrong, but I think, and you mentioned this, the current system is that the more you use, the less you pay, right, for the water? And that doesn't make sense. On this new system, on this new rate increase, they're actually going to pay more the more they, they use.
Well, on the commercial, you know, your commercial and industrial customers that have a pretty steady load, they don't have those big spikes.
Sure.
They'll still have a declining block, but it won't be, we did eliminate a couple of tiers in that one also, so.
Is there any way to know based on the current water usage or historical water usage, how much that will impact? Because folks probably aren't going to stop using water, at least not right away. So do we have a lot that would go over that threshold where they get this huge spike?
That I don't know. If anyone really could use a lot of sprinklers.
Okay. So do we have any way to anticipate, are they going to get a huge increase in their bill?
We have some. I remember Jimmy saying, the people in water turbines that use over 9,000 gallons, they don't care how much it costs, they're going to water their lawn.
Okay.
That was a difficult response he got.
Your single elderly widow, fixed income type person is going to be in the 1,000 to 2,000 gallon block. And this picks on the people that really water their.
So do we want brown lawns around town? Do we want brown lawns around town?
Well, that's still water. That's the response we always got.
So it's not really a conservation incentive? It's a, it's a way to earn more money for the town?
Well, it's a good, people want to waste.
Sure, which we shouldn't. I agree, yeah. Okay. I just didn't, I didn't know if we were going to have a huge backlash.
We did a year of competitions, um, July, August, they got pool sprinklers to drive by, get, you know, get that high usage to drive up there, there's garden hoses, put your sprinklers laid out.
Sure.
And they work for the water.
Yeah.
Favorite yard's brown, their green.
Yeah.
We get that every.
I mean, and I certainly, I, I think the decrease in rates was not, I mean, I don't, I think that was bad. I think we should, should at least not decrease the rates, but now we're going the opposite direction and I just, you know, if we're prepared for that.
No problem using 25,000 gallons to get that 4,000 water.
Okay.
We still have, we also offer a sprinkler rate. And they get a credit that they don't have to pay.
Gotcha.
Good concern though, because you're probably one of those guys who works with green lawns. I know I'm, I'm a guy, I've got four grandkids living with me, so we got huge water, water bills, but.
He has asphalt.
I have asphalt. I do have a big driveway.
There's a black lawn.
Are we good to go? The next slide just shows what we think the cash flows will be with the water utility over the next couple of years. We show temporary loan coming in from the wastewater utility and then paying that back with the, I'm sorry, getting, we're giving a loan, half a million to the wastewater utility, we get that paid back probably next August. I think that we worked backwards on the call date on those, the final maturity on the sewer. And we probably would take out the refunding, the 17 bonds are callable, 2017 water bonds. So when we get to the point of doing the, the new bond issue for the treatment plant, we have the funds that we can pay off that 2017 bond issue, what's left. So, you know, that helps us. That bond coverage line below there, it has to be more than 125%. Like it to be 250%, you know, but it needs to be somewhere in that range. We think that that's, we, if we leave those other bonds out, there'll be an overlap. We can juggle around it if we want, but, you know, if you pancake a new bond issue on an old bond issue, you know, it's going to make those coverage ratios a lot thinner, at least with the, the rates that we've got proposed. So that's sort of the plan, and, and we would use cash that we've accumulated from system development charges and other things to pay off that old bond issue. We can do that on the water, but we can't do it on the wastewater. And that's why we need that temporary loan for the wastewater project. Okay, let's, so here we are tonight. We're introducing three new utility rate ordinances. I think the stormwater is a pretty easy one to understand. Water and waste, I think the wastewater is really pretty straightforward too, as far as, you know, doing increments at 10% levels over the next couple of years. And on the water utility, you know, we're restructuring a little bit. This, getting that in place this summer would be nice just to see how that impacts our overall revenue when we get to the end of this year and, and looking at a bond issue in the first quarter of next year. Because that final rate, it's important that we have that approved, even though it won't be implemented until toward the end of the construction phase. We'll just pay interest during construction on the water bond issue. But then, when the full debt service kicks in, we'll need that, that third or, you know, the, the third step on the, on the water rates to hit those coverage ratios we just looked at. We'll have to have a public hearing on all three of these, and we will coordinate with Jenny. The public knows we're planning to do it at the May 22nd, you know, assuming that the council is on board with this plan. We plan to advertise for a public hearing on all three ordinances so we can do them all at the same time and not have to drag you through all this three separate times. And by doing the multi-phase, we don't have to do that again when we get to the financing phase. So that's sort of in a nutshell is the, the plan. I know that's a lot to digest. I think the last time I came, there was so much on the agenda, we didn't really get a chance to delve into the details as much as we have today. And the details have gotten deeper to delve into since we've had some of these team meetings and conference, conference calls and video conference calls over the last couple of months. So I think we've got a pretty good, good plan and entertain any questions. I think all, all three ordinances are, are on the agenda. I'd be glad to take questions, get your feedback.
So why, can you, can you maybe just expand on why that one bond cannot be refinanced?
Yeah, when, it's already been refunded once through the bond bank. And oftentimes, when you do a refunding, especially when they give you a big premium upfront, they lock those interest, those coupon rates in for the duration.
So it's non-callable or?
It's non-callable, yeah.
Okay.
And so that, that's sort of the dilemma we have with that one.
What would be the, I mean, if, if all of a sudden we defined ourselves in this extremely low interest rate environment today and then doing a five-year bond anticipation note, you know, where, you know, the cycle is typically, you know, five to six, seven maybe years and rates start going up, why would we do the bond anticipation though? Why wouldn't we just go ahead and accelerate this while we're in an extremely low interest rate environment? And, I mean, I understand that there's certain time for design, you know, of, of, you know, the, the systems.
We could do that, we could do that, but we won't know how to right-size the bond issue until we get the construction bid. So that was sort of the, but used to do those all the time with SRF and rural development where they would close those bonds at a huge number. And then when they get through the project, they'd have all this money that they'd been hanging on to that wasn't needed and they could have loaned it to another community, but, and you've got some handcuffs on what you can do with that money. If you over-bond a project, for instance, you can't just invest it at high interest rates, you've got to arbitrage yield restrictions. And, you know, we want to try to right-size it as best we can, but we could.
But if we get it bidded out and know what it's going to cost, then number one, it's cheaper today, and number two, the interest rate is probably lower today than it would be five, seven years from now?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and the, the bond anticipation note on the water utility, we probably would only have that out there for about nine months or so. Because our plan is to get bids on that and do the long-term financing probably the first quarter of next year or maybe the second quarter, but, because that's sort of an imminent thing, getting more capacity. So I think we're in pretty good shape on that. I mean, nobody's got a crystal ball, but I don't see tax exempt rates, you know, given what we've been going through right now, that that's going to be a huge jump there. If anything, the rates came down some, taxable rates came down. But on the wastewater utility, that big project is so far out that we don't want to bond at five, you, you basically have three years to spend the money once you do a, a bond issue. And so, but, and if we're just looking at the 2 million, we could do the long-term on the $2 million projects, we could certainly do that. It locks us in for 10 years. There's usually a 10-year call protection when you do a 20-year bond issue. And so we could do that, but if, you know, we're not sure how big that big project's going to be, we can make that call next quarter. You know, that might be something we look at because it's, I feel more comfortable about rates staying pretty steady through the first quarter of next year than I do five years from now.
Right, right.
So that's a good point, and, and we can still keep an eye on that.
Well, I mean, I love your time, Chris, don't get me wrong. But I mean, if we can accelerate it and save some money, save it from, from the standpoint of, of the town and a lower interest rate and, and a, and a project that's not going to cost 25, it's going to cost 18, that's still savings in my mind.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you, Chris, thank you.
You bet. Any other?
Well, thank you very much. It looks like you've done a lot of work. I apologize.
It's been a team, it's been a team effort and, but, thank you.
So are you working with Jenny with this?
You know, I was, she's been ill this week, I know, and she was involved in some of the early meetings. I've, I've given her all these materials. I haven't been able to talk to her this week. We just haven't been able to connect.
So you'd be kind enough to give her that presentation?
Absolutely, yes, absolutely. In fact, I sent her all this material.
Thank you.
Earlier this week and I hope she's on a road to recovery here.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
So before you tonight, on, on this topic, are three ordinances that are just for first read, ordinance nine, 10, and 12. So do they need, those by name and number?
I, I would read the number and then the title of it. You don't have to read the entire body of it.
So do them all together?
My head's down.
Yeah, E. So the third one, I don't think I have that reading.
It's 12. I emailed that to you all and I get to you though.
All right. Thank you.
Just revise the agenda, I'm sorry.
That was the stormwater.
Yes, it's a stormwater one, is number 12.
Okay, can we carry on?
Yes, sir, please.
All right, for ordinance nine, 2020, it's a first reading. Would you like to read it?
I'll just read the title, if that's all right. An ordinance amending rates and charges for the use and services rendered by the Town of Danville Water Utility.
Is that enough?
Is that good enough?
Yes, sir, yep.
Okay, we don't have to vote on that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, the second one is an ordinance 10, 2020, an ordinance to amend water rates. Do we want to read that?
Yes, please. Just the, just divide ordinance and title, please. Would you like to read that?
Yeah, I'll read that. Okay, ordinance number 10, 2020, an ordinance amending rates and charges for the use and services rendered by the Town of Danville Sewage Works.
Okay, ordinance has been read. The next ordinance is 11, 2020.
I need number 12 read this time. 11 will come up. They're out of sequence because this one dealt with the rate increases. Ordinance 11 was drafted prior to 12, and it's based on the fees. That'll come up and then your next agenda item.
Okay.
Okay, ordinance 12, 2020, an ordinance amending rates and charges for the use and services rendered by the Town of Danville Stormwater Utility.
Thank you very much.
So we've had a reading for all three.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, if you don't mind, if we could let Buzz go, he didn't plan very well for this meeting tonight. 25 years ago, he got married and so, not knowing that he was going to have this meeting tonight, so.
That's why I have to work on my anniversary.
Yeah. So if Buzz would like to leave, you're welcome.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you very much, Buzz.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Buzz.
Feel free to call me if you have.
Sure.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is item D, ordinance 11, 2020.
That's not D.
I think we're okay here.
Take down my ninja scarf here. Pretty much what we're doing here is, so this is about, I would say, five or six months in the works. All the department heads came together and looking to upgrade or update our feeds. We're really behind on a lot of things and pretty much kind of giving away our services. So we're looking at upgrading those feeds and bringing them up to par with, I guess, our own standards. They're still lower than probably other communities, but our own standards, probably making it worth our time, the value. So we're trying to, you know, capture that value. So we're trying to, you know, capture that value and then we can reuse those dollars back into things that we're doing. So, it's a large document and took a lot of work. So, this is just for the first read, feel free to go through it, ask us questions. So it's, every department kind of has a section in there, so if you have a question about a department, probably reach out to them because I'm not going to know the details and the why they did it, but some of that, it's in there. A lot of these are reissuance of the same fees too, you can see the changes in there. And what we're looking to do is try to have one document that the citizens can go to and find fees. Because right now, it's really hard to find how many, sorry, I'm loud. It's really hard to find how much things are if you look into ordinances. So, I mean, really, it's just for the first read and if you have any questions generally right now, I'm happy to answer those, but.
Any questions from anybody? Okay, it looks like you're free to go.
Okay.
I'm sure we'll read it and call you every five minutes.
Yes. That'll work.
The, the ordinance will need to be read by ordinance and title, just like the first read that you just gave me.
Okay. So we'll read it now?
Okay, ordinance number 11, 2020, an ordinance to amend the Danville Town Code Title III, Chapter 35.02 to adjust user fees.
Next item on the agenda is item E, a request from downtown Danville Partnership to use and close streets for filming of a movie.
Hi, thank you. I'm mostly here to represent the Mayberry Man Movie guys. Obviously, we had to cancel the festival and they are still planning on filming in Danville, which is a good thing, hopefully. And they are asking the weekend of September 5th through the 7th, which is a holiday weekend, so there wouldn't be anything else going on. They are hoping to be able on the Saturday to use Main Street and the town square for a.
Shoot?
Yeah, the parts of the street. They, their request was just move the festival. I tried for a couple of days and it just seems impossible with the way things are because I don't want to plan another festival and then have to cancel another festival. So they want to like stage areas, so it wouldn't be the entire square, maybe sections of the street. So we would have to shut down maybe just like Marion Street or maybe Marion and Washington. On Mon, on the Saturday, they are hoping to be able to do like the festival opening, like a grand opening, not all of the streets. On the Sunday, they want to be able to shoot some festival scenes and on Monday do some parade sequences, which the Monday would be a holiday. Obviously, I would need help from the DPW guys, that's my big concern, asking you guys. I can't really shut streets down by myself. And you, please, guys. So that's mostly what I'm here to see if you would consider it. There's really no other weekend to do it from any of our perspectives. The next weekend is Fair on the Square, so it's taken up then if they're still having it, I'm assuming. I, I, I don't have a lot more details, I'm mostly just asking if it would be a possibility to use the square. Their thinking is that people would come for the filming, so the merchants could maybe make up some lost revenue, the restaurants, because there will be people in town on a weekend that they normally wouldn't be in town. But I would need DPW guys' help and police help.
Couple of questions. I think you're right, I think people would love to come and watch and maybe be seconds or whatever you call that. What is this movie about? What's the storyline? Is it a documentary?
No, it's, it's a guy who is the son of a person that was on the Andy Griffith Show, is a movie star. And he was driving through the town and is arrested for speeding or something, I don't remember. And instead of paying a fine, the judge sentences him to stay the week for the Mayberry Festival. The, like what we would have, that's his punishment, he has to stay. And through the course of the week, he becomes not a crappy guy.
Is Chief Hilton in the movie?
I know, that's not.
I believe in the movie.
I was going to ask if we could all be in the parade.
Jay Fox movie like that.
And actually, I will side note, so my original plan, Governor Holcomb was going to be in the parade. So, I know it's an election year, yeah, the parade, I'm not that stupid. So, the last I heard, he does still want to be in the parade. Now, I think he's got some bigger fish to be Ryan, but hey. So, and I, and I have reached, I have reached out to some people that were going to be in the parade. I've got people that were in the parade that are not from around here. I mean, I, like, who knew there was a troupe of Santas that do parades?
Get these councilmen in here.
And you could be in the parade.
It's our town.
Well, definitely.
Absolutely. You need the town manager and these people.
These people. So, that's the premise of the movie, kind of, he learns a lesson.
All right, well, tell them if they don't put these people in, we're not going to open the town.
If you help me pull this off, whoever wants to be in the parade can be in the parade.
So, so tell me this, who's paying for this?
So, you should mention that.
Pardon?
Because I said, I'm not using any Mayberry money, Mayberry Festival money for your movie.
I, I didn't mean it that way, but is there some big funder or something that's paying for this?
Well, the movie, the movie people would be, I mean, they don't have money to pay for, like, we're not paying, they're not paying people to be here. Now they're paying the actors that are starring in the movie. A lot of people are not getting paid to be in the movie because they just want to be in the movie.
Are these real actors, like, people will know?
Well, you know, not Brad Pitt, but, the star of the movie is actually a guy that has done some stuff in Hollywood. I'm not a big movie person, so I didn't recognize him, but it wasn't who I wanted. Yeah, they're, they're paid people, actors that will be here, but I don't think it's anybody that's a big name.
Well, if you want us to open this, you got to talk to these people here, make sure they get in it.
Oh, they could be actors.
I say go for it.
So far, what I have talked to is good with this.
It's good with this, okay.
And so, really what we need is, is a vote to allow them to utilize this.
Right, so.
We'll, we'll work with the closures and with the state of Indiana to get 36.
So how do you guys feel about this?
The merchants are on board because it would be an opportunity to be open and maybe people will be in town that, smaller, obviously much smaller than the festival would.
So Dave and you guys, you feel okay?
I'd make a motion to go ahead and approve the street closure. Just would like, you know, maybe a couple of weeks heads up before we know exactly which ones and what dates.
I mean, I think everything right now is kind of.
Yeah.
Second.
Still fluid. I'll second that.
Take a vote.
Tom Pato.
Yes.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Frank Van Leer.
Aye.
Okay, you got your wish.
Thank you.
You better call these people.
I have something else to tell you that's not exactly on here. So, the partnership grant, the money that you so graciously give us, $10,000 of that goes to the Mayberry Festival. We do, the partnership allows $10,000 to use the festival. And since there's not a festival happening, we decided that that $10,000, we have created an emergency grant program for the merchants on the square. I posted it today to the merchants' Facebook and so far, we have nine merchants that have requested funds. So there's an application they have to fill out, some little bits they have to jump through, but, so they'll be getting $500 and if as many don't apply, and we do have the $10,000, so some of them could get even more than that. So, thank you for the money, thank you from the merchants because we're trying to go help them because several of them are hurting right now on the square. Just, any questions?
So, I was actually going to bring this up at the tail end of our meeting, but I'll go ahead and bring it up because I think it's a pretty good segue to this. I had a resident contact me about Jims opening in Brownsburg and so I needed to educate myself on that. So I was watching the town council meetings for the town of Brownsburg and they've actually used some economic development money to assist their businesses in town through the same, similar type of program. In front of me, I actually have a copy of the, the grant application and the, I guess, the information on, on that. I would like to maybe propose to the town council that maybe we match that 10, maybe even do something a little bit more. We have, we have a lot of businesses here in town. Our community has really come together to, to support those, those businesses very well and, and we do know that there's some struggle out there. You know, we hope things come back online fairly quickly, but, you know, there's still some pain out there. Will, go ahead.
So with that, it might be kind of cool to, to open the chamber on that, kind of have a broader scheme. Like ours is just focused on that area, it'd be great to be able to do the other.
Absolutely, I was going to say, I mean, that's, that's one of the aspects is, is that, you know, there's other businesses in town besides just, you know, around the square, you know, and I appreciate everything that the partnership, you know, does and its mission, but, you know, I think, you know, too, expanding, you know, something out throughout the, the entire town, I think would be super important. So, for your guys' consideration, I apologize to inject that now, but I thought it was timely.
Well, maybe we should talk about it a little bit and get something formal together. Mark and yourself and.
Or just.
Yeah, Will.
plagiarize a little bit.
Yep. Our document is that document.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, we did it. Fantastic, good, good. So we.
I like how you roll with that.
Yeah, we got it from the town managers group, so, and then I just took it over to partnership and kind of cut it up and made it a little simpler. But, plus, we don't have as much funds, so we reduced the funds and, you know, same thing, three months, take the light.
So Mark, what do you think, present that document next meeting?
Yeah, I, I would, I've got to be honest, I'd very much like to speak with Mrs. Piercy first, but to make sure where we have, we'd be able to fund that from, have our legal involved. I know there's some areas, go ahead, sir, please.
So, there are a lot of things that you need to consider. There's a lot of restrictions on different dollars that can be used and how it can be utilized. And so, you'll have to take it from funds which aren't earmarked for specific uses. So you can't use MVH money, you can't use local street, there may be a good possibility you can't use your general fund on this stuff. Because at the end of the day, it is supporting local businesses for their own operations and you can't have that as taxpayer expenditures. The other thing that I would caution the council on, and I know that I'm the naysayer here, but there's a great concern as to the liquidity, I got to take this off. And if you can get the microphone, I'm having a hard time here in this side.
There is a great concern regarding liquidity when it comes to municipalities right now. There's an estimate that across the state of Indiana, that 30% of the property owners escrow their property taxes. With that number at 30%, I can tell you in Morgan County, we're running into an issue because it's 10% in Morgan County. I don't know what it is in Hendricks County. The reason why I bring that up is your first disbursement for your taxes, which normally is 50% of your general fund, which usually comes in June, is not going to be coming except for those funds that have been escrowed. There's a deferment of all the other ones and you won't see that money until August. That means you're going to have to cash flow, I mean, normally when you do your budgeting, you do it for an 18-month cycle so that you can get through those time periods, but now it's going to be pushed out even farther because of the COVID crisis. If you have enough liquidity, and this is really going to be delving into the numbers for the municipality itself, if you have that liquidity, fine, but we don't know the extent of the impact. In a lot of municipalities, even when you talk about user rates, so utilities, water, wastewater, sanitary, stuff that we were talking about today, that those revenues have even gone down over the past two months because people are prioritizing where they put their funds. And they know that they cannot be shut off because of the executive orders that have come from the state. The funding mechanisms that you look at, if you run into problems, creates a bigger issue. So, the Title IV of the CARES Act has this provision where there's going to be 500 mil, $5 billion, $500 billion given to local municipalities or states to give to municipalities for liquidity issues because they know that these types of things are going to be coming up. In Indiana, that translates to about $4.8 billion that's going to be available. The Bond Bank is an entity that said that they're going to control the disbursement of that $4.8 billion, and they have come out and said that that has to be a last revenue or a last resort revenue source. And so, prior to doing that, you have to go through the other things such as the mid-year advanced funding program that the Bond Bank has. Problem with the mid-year advanced funding program is, one of, you have two deadlines left to apply for that. For your, a June disbursement, you got to apply by Friday. For a July disbursement, you have to pay by, or apply by the 28th, I believe, of this month, it's, or 23rd. The issue with that is, you don't know what the impact is going to be on you for the property taxes. So it's, it's a chicken and egg thing, so that, I'm throwing this out there as just kind of a warning to make sure when you look at these things that you're looking at every issue that could possibly spin off. A lot of communities have gone down this road of creating financial benefits and incentives for their local businesses. I, I fully understand that, we need the businesses to get back up and running, but I can tell you that the financial advisors that we've contacted and have discussions with are scared to death with those communities that have created those types of things because they're not sure how they're going to move funds around to cover the shortfalls. So, just keep all of that in mind as you go through this, it really is a numbers game where you're going to have to look at every line item, every fund, where your revenues are now, where your available cash is now, and what, how long that that can sustain you because we don't know what your revenues are going to be, so.
All right, thank you. So, we really need to talk to the treasurer and you guys.
I, I think it's, your treasurer and your finance, there, there's no clerk treasurer that I know of in the state of Indiana, except for one maybe, Michael Griffin, because he's, he's that way. You know what I'm saying? Who can really go through that sort of analysis to get there because it is complex, you have to take a lot of assumptions in here and those have to be based on these huge trends that have different studies around. So, without access to those studies, you can't make that analysis. But it'll be working with the clerk treasurer's office, but also with your financial assistant.
So we have to err on the side of caution. So I think we better go on the side there and think about it. Anything else?
When was the Mayberry Festival scheduled?
Sorry?
When was it scheduled for?
The third weekend.
Uh, the.
Fifteenth.
Yep.
Okay, next item on the agenda, item F, request for the Danville Chamber of Commerce.
Kelly couldn't be here tonight, so I'm going to stand in for her. Originally, when she asked for Jefferson Street for the farmer's market, she excluded the weekend of the 15th, 16th, 17th because of the Mayberry Festival. Since the Mayberry Festival is not going to be held, she'd like to have permission to utilize the street for the farmer's market during that weekend.
Okay, so, any comments from anybody? Do I have a motion to approve item F?
I make a motion to approve item F to allow the street closure for the Chamber of Commerce farmer's market.
You have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, can you please take a vote?
Tom Pato.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
David Winters.
Greg Van Laer.
Aye.
A five to zero motion has been passed.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next item on the agenda is item G, request by the town manager to rent two rooms upstairs.
We've been contacted by the Hendricks County Solid Waste District. For years, we've tried to rent our, part of our facility so that we can obviously recoup some money. It's a big building, we have plenty of space. They contacted us with an offer. We are ready to move forward to accept. I don't have a contract. Our attorneys are working with their attorneys to make sure that we have everything in writing, but it'd bring in $1,200 a month of extra revenue to the town for them to rent the two rooms to the south side. Is that right, Barry?
North side.
North side, sorry. They're going to rent two rooms on the north side of the, of the building. So I'm just looking for some consensus to continue to move forward and work out this contract with them and hopefully get them in very soon and have a, a paying tenant in the town of Danville.
Any comments from the council about this?
Solid Waste has actually been in the Danville area in the past, correct? On the west side of the square?
Yes.
Super happy to have them back.
Yeah, they're in Brownsburg.
Even happier that they're paying the town of Danville.
Yeah, they're in Brownsburg.
I'm good to go.
It sounds like a really good idea.
Mark, you said you needed consensus. It says here we need a vote, so do we have to vote on this one?
I did put in there a vote, but I chose not to because there's no contract available at this time, so I just went ahead with consensus to move forward. All right.
Do I have a motion? To approve?
I won't need one tonight, sir. I know I put it in there, but I won't need it tonight.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is item H, request from Stormwater to hire an additional employee, Superintendent Barry Lofton.
So for, we had a meeting retreat with the council a while back on a Saturday, and I gave a brief, brief description of that to go into a little bit more detail. When I got here, I was bound and determined to do this job myself and try to make it work. But being here seven years, I found that we have a lot of infrastructure that's probably the oldest infrastructure in the town. And there's actually more points than water or sewer combined. So I'm looking to add a person that's not only going to do Stormwater stuff, reporting to IDIM, but they're also going to do building maintenance, building inspection, as well as helping out other departments. The position is going to be pretty broad. It's going to take a lot of work, and it's going to take a dedicated person. The idea is to do a lot of our work in town ourself that we possibly can. When we get into larger projects, we probably won't be able to take those on because it's too safety risk involved, and we don't want to take that on. But the last three years, I've been over budget in 670, 500, 400, 670, 500, 500. Those are both items in my budget that do specifically do infrastructure work and pay for that. And after running some numbers and crunching them with Mark and Jenny and really looking at this, a lot of this is going to hinge on this fee increase, a rate increase, because it can't be funded without that. So, and then we've also, Mark and I have talked about with everything that's going on, when to implement this. I think it's a wait-and-see approach, because I'm at a point now with the work that we've done so far this year, which is extensive. I can count on five projects that are going to be over $200,000. We're not going to be able to fund those and not use the cash account. So the best thing that I thought to do to help several areas, and specifically me, because I'm, I'm really overloaded with a lot of work and try to keep up. But the maintenance of this building, the older it gets, the more maintenance it takes. We have five crossings that, like I said, are going to take a lot of money, and a lot of that work can be done in-house. Talked to Public Works Department, they're willing to give a guy when we need him. And maybe we can do a lot of the work in town ourself like we used to do. I think it's just important, I think it's needed. I know it's needed. I just always tried to do things hiring third parties because I'm not a big fan of getting huge employees, because each employee based at the top pay is going to cost the town anywhere from $62,000 to $82,000, depending on what plan they take in insurance. So it is a big expense, and it's forever as far as we can tell, you know? So this is not something I can hire somebody and say, okay, we can let you go, your work's done, we're done with you. So it's a big step. But with the rate increase, Stormwater is a static fee. It does not have valleys and peaks like water and sewer. It doesn't rely on use, it's based on land area and impervious surface. So every single house that we add, and I will mention that Courtney has done a fabulous job on collecting fees. We were not collecting all of our fees, and she's found every single item that we need. I went out and recalculated ERUs to make sure people's impervious surface match what we're charging them. We've done a lot of work trying to get to this point, and I think now it's time to, to get it done. So without rambling on too much more, I could talk about it all night long. I think it's just, it's needed, and I would appreciate the council's approval on this.
So I know for a while you've been wanting an extra person.
Yes.
And have you spoke to Jenny about this?
Yes, sir.
What does she feel?
She, at first, she wasn't sure, but I showed her the numbers. Basically, to go deeper into the budget, you know, those two items in the budget, I will have to move money from those line items into a salary. But that person will be doing those items, and they'll be doing it at a lesser rate than what I have to pay a private company. You know, it costs a lot of money to dig eight feet in hole, there's a lot of safety issues, it just takes a lot of money. And I think we can get more done, especially with Public Works willing to help out, lending hand when we need it. I, I think we can do a lot of good stuff, and like I say, there's, I didn't realize how mu, how old our infrastructure was. Just last week, a week ago, the Sewer Department, Jerry and I talked about an issue that was, that showed itself, one of the customers had a backup, and we found they had a private company come in, and we found a, a kind of a cross, crossing somewhere. We're trying to figure out what that is. So we are not a CSO. I'm going to throw a couple of acronyms at you. You guys probably don't know what a Rule 13 is, or maybe not a Rule 5, but those are directly related with Stormwaters, it's reporting to IDIM. We have to report when we have a cross contamination because a CSO is combined sewer. We are not a CSO, and that, that's a good thing. But every time we find this, that's considered illicit discharge, we have to address it. We put a timeline together, try to meet that timeline so we don't get fined from IDIM. So I know Jerry's done his part, and I've done my part. But those are the things that kind of lead me to believe that this position, the way I put the, and you have the job description, you should have the job description. If you have any questions, please ask. Because that person's going to be really put into reporting to IDIM. I, I currently do that, but my idea is to try to spend a little bit more time in the office, do plan review, you know, move into more of the office type of work. But as needed, I will still have to be out in the field, because we also did, you know, 283 permits last year. We are not slowing down. I mean, even now, we're still, I feel like I'm more busy now than before all this stuff happened. I'm not really sure if it's just because of the weather breaking that time of year. But we have one development that's basically shut off, and that's Lenar Homes. They have not moved a piece of equipment, they took all the equipment out. So there is an effect, and that's why I think taking a wait-and-see approach till the, the beginning of the year, because the way it is now, the way I would like to put this together would be to have equipment, because I will be coming before you at some point for equipment. And it, it won't be cheap equipment, it'll be stuff to do excavation and install pipe. I don't want to, I, I want the approval, but I don't want to put that person in if, if it's going to have a negative impact on our cash on hand. At some point, there will be a hit, but I don't want to make it worse, so.
I'm a bit of a loss without the treasurer here, and it's really important at this time. And I really want to, my feeling is I really want to help you. I know you've been asking for somebody. The rest of the council, do you have any ideas or any thoughts?
Well, the rate increase more than covers, to my knowledge, more than covers the cost of the employee. So I'm, I'm, I know I'm good with it. Because it's, it, it really shouldn't have an impact on, on any of the other funding, because it'll be self-funded from, from the utility, so.
Yeah, just to, to add on to that, this is 100% paid out of Stormwater utility fees. This is not a negative impact on, on, on the general fund. It's a, not a taxpayer-based position, it's based off the fees off the utility. I would like for it to come off the general fund, but there's just not enough meat on the bone. So the reality is, is we got to take that in consideration, that was done.
Purchases down the road, though, would come out of a different fund?
They will come out of the cash Stormwater account. Right now, there's a half a million dollars in the, the cash account for Stormwater. So there will be some requests coming. I'm still putting together the best scenario for that. My, my original thought is to lease equipment, because then we don't have to maintain it. The cost is a set amount every month, and that could come out of a budget. There's some pros and cons to that, but that's something for later, I think. I think initially, that, that brings me back to the whole point of the, the budget this year. I'm not sure with the work that needs to be done, that I can do that work and have the employee and not dip into that cash fund. So it's kind of a, it's, it's a tough thing, because I'm trying to be really careful about how we spend the money. And I want to make sure that the future's done right, because when the utility was put together, they were very thoughtful in collecting a whole year's worth of revenue before they spent a penny. So now we have all that cash on hand, and our Stormwater's grown quite a bit. The, the fees, like I said, every time we grow, we get a commercial building or a residence that adds, and it's a static fee, it doesn't go up and down. So, yeah, there's, there's, there's a lot to chew on, but I've mulled over, and I did talk to Jenny. She had sent me an email and said that, that after we discussed, she said, you're right, you do have enough funds to fund this, based on the rate increase. So nothing will be done until this rate increase is approved, and it may not happen until the first next year. It just all comes down to how, how many failures we have. Because for the last three or four years, I've had a plan to do A, B, C, D, go out and do these projects. And every year, those projects get to the next year because of some, some failure that's unknown that rears its ugly head, and then we have to spend money to repair it. So what I'm trying to do as well is get this position to get ahead. I don't know that there's ever getting ahead when you have 2,000 points in the storm system that's in some places 70, 80 years old. So the reality is, is I'm trying to get those projects done so things, so that, so the citizen, citizen can see there's Stormwater utilities at work. I want to be visible, saying, okay, this is what we do, this is what these fees do. There is a service to that. Stormwater gets confused, Stormwater's drainage. And we report to IDIM, not nearly as intensely as the Water and Sewer Department, but we do have to report to IDIM as well, and that's a big part of this position as well.
All right. Mark, you have any thoughts?
Nope. The money, the money's there, I, 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 it's really up to him. If he wants the position, great, if he doesn't want it, that's up to him as well. I, I'm not sure I was following it, but the money is there. I talked to the clerk treasurer, and he believes he's got sufficient funding to do this.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Hold on, we have a question.
On item H.
When would you bring this person on board? Is that kind of your wait-and-see?
That's what I was talking about. I, I wanted to start him as soon as the rate fee goes into effect. Actually, I wanted to start him as soon as I get approval. But with all the talk going on about the taxes and all this stuff and not paying their bills, that kind of scares me a little bit. We are halfway through the year, we're not talking a lot of money. To finish out the year, it'd be like $35,000. But that's $35,000 out of a budget that, that also needs to, to repair failures. I want to start him as soon as possible, but I wanted to make sure I got your approval before I, you know, said, this is the day we're going to hire.
All right, enough conversation. Do I have a motion for item H?
I make a motion that we allow Barry to, you know, hire a Stormwater employee.
I second it.
I have a motion and a second. Courtney, we have to take a vote.
Tom Pato.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
And Greg Van Laer.
Aye.
Five to zero, the motion's been passed, thank you. Are there any comments from the council or staff?
I've got two more items, sir.
And, pardon?
We have still two more items on the agenda, sir.
Oh, there's two more?
Yes, sir. I come before the council tonight with a budgeted item from, that was in our budget from 2019 into 2020. We discussed this at the work-study session. We have a salary for a code enforcement person. This person would be used to enforce the codes of the town of Danville, a lot of our ordinances. They'd be will, they'd be there to assist water, wastewater, stormwater, public works, grass mowing, things like that. The, the calls that we get on a very regular basis, they would go out and enforce those ordinances for us.
Parking?
Parking enforcement, all of it. Once, once we get the parking situation figured out, because of the, is it the sixth?
Sixth Circuit.
Sixth Circuit, of course, yeah, that's right, yeah. But that's, that's the issue with that. But yeah, so I come for you tonight to get approval to move forward with that position. One of the questions that was asked, if I may, was the funding, because again, this is an issue. Only 30% of this position is funded through the general fund. The rest of it is paid through utilities.
Any comments?
So would he be, would this person be a Danville Public Works in that department?
No, they would all fall under me.
Oh, okay.
They'd fall under the administration. Actually, work, they would work for me and probably would work closely with probably Stormwater and planning and building, and then of course, water, wastewater would, if they had violations they needed help with on that, they would help them on that.
Do I have a motion to approve? A enforcement officer, I guess we'll call him.
I'll make a motion to approve the code enforcement officer.
You have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Courtney, would you please take a vote?
Tom Pato.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Greg Van Laer.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Is there a second one to those votes?
Um, I believe Superintendent Ellis has something for you.
Drill, huh?
I believe I requested, Captain Spencer requested to start doing some test well drilling. We've got, got Kenny Elliott on board with one site picked out now, and I want approval to be able to, as we acquire their sites, I can continue to drill and keep looking for water. This is the beginning of the master plan as far as everything, we got to find some water, so. That's what I, I'm hoping to get all three drilled and, and find a haul of them, end up being winners. But you never know, that's what they're, that's what they're for. I've got plenty of money in that account to pay for it, and that's the prices for all three, if I can get all three drilled.
How much are they to drill?
It's like 47.
Forty-seven.
Normally, these are signed by myself and, and the clerk treasurer. We got these a little late, but both Jenny and I are, are okay with this.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Considered as budgeted.
Do I have a motion to approve drilling three wells?
I move that we approve the capital expenditure, expenditure request for the, the drilling for the water.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Courtney?
Tom Pato.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Greg Van Laer.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any comments from the council staff or council activity going to any committees?
I actually had.
Commissions?
No. I actually reached out to Jim Stevens today. I was attempt, I was hoping to make the merit board meeting on Monday, but I couldn't. But they are having another meeting on the 21st of May. And what he wanted me to tell the council was that their plan is that after each regular meeting, they want to get on the agenda and present an update or whatever. And he wanted me to let all of us know that they will work to get on the schedule after their May 21st meeting, special meeting that they're going to have, so, yeah, sure.
I come before the council tonight seeking consensus on a project that I hope will kind of go in with everything else that we've, some of the things we've talked about tonight. And looking at the governor's orders on restaurants opening up, as you know, a lot of them will only be able to open at a 50% threshold. And so what I would like to propose, if the.
And so what I would like to propose, if the council would allow me some latitude, is I'd like to contact our restaurants. We have a plethora of picnic tables that we use for the Concert on the Square, that we use it for the park events, and I'd like to reach out to these businesses and see if they would be interested in having a couple of our picnic tables put next to their business so they can have some outdoor seating. And speaking with our insurance agent, he would like to know if we could possibly do maybe a hold harmless agreement. I'll work with Taft Law to get something like that done, if they feel it's necessary. Some of the areas that we've identified, and this is why I need consensus tonight, may involve closing off some parking spaces next to some of the businesses. So what we looked at is on Jefferson Street next to the Mayberry, maybe closing off the parking spaces on the east side, put some barricades up and putting picnic tables there for them, for say, two guys and Beehive and maybe Frank's. We own the alleyway there in between Indiana and Washington, which has ballast, Ballard, so that nobody can come through there. That'd be a good place for them to be able to use some outdoor seating. I've reached out to a couple of landowners to see if they would be interested. Maybe there's one next to the Bread Basket, a vacant lot. I've reached out to them to see if they would be interested in letting us use that lot. I think there's room on the sidewalks in front of Los Patios and Happy Dragon. I do, I believe that, I think there'll be a need for these things. I think they'll be appreciated, but before I move forward any further, I need the council's approval. I was also thinking about even maybe taking a couple of parking spaces in front of Courthouse Grounds and maybe Frank's Place, so that we could utilize that part of the area for some picnic tables as well.
Looking at doing this for a duration or on Saturdays or?
Personally, I think once we get them in place, I'd rather just leave them there once we get barricades there until probably around the Fourth of July, when they're able to go 100%.
So I, I don't know, this is a legal question or not, right? They're able to do 50% capacity. I assume that that, in a way, increases the number of people they can serve because they still have the indoor seating available, and so that wouldn't be an issue there. I mean.
I don't believe it's going to be an issue because the restriction is regarding the confined spaces and the spacing there. So I think you'd be okay if you are talking about an outside spacing. The important thing that Mark and I will talk about is that it's got to be offered to everybody. You can't just select certain vendors and stuff, so.
I've been looking at all of the businesses, including the Los Patios Two and Jimmy John's, and I think there are places there that we, again, we're looking at places we can put those picnic tables so that we're not impeding traffic, we're not putting people in jeopardy, but we're, are giving them some outside seating, and that's, that's what we're looking at. If you guys are okay with it.
Did you have something else to add, Joe?
I was just going to say, in addition to more food and drinks that you sell, the benefit is also here because you have a food and beverage tax now, so.
Thank you for reminding us.
Thank you.
What do you want from us? A motion to?
I just need a consensus to, to give me the authority to do some partial street closures during this period to allow for some outdoor dining.
And, I'm sorry, when is this, when would that start?
I'll be in contact with them first thing tomorrow morning.
That's next Monday.
Yeah, next Monday's when they open, so, and, and again, I'll, I'll work with Public Works and the Parks Department to, to get these things put in place.
Sounds good, Mark. Do I have a motion to, let Mark go ahead with this?
It's either way, yeah.
Sounds good.
Consensus is good enough.
Yep. Now, these, these businesses, I, I mean, this is, was not, you know, anything of their doing, you know? I mean, there's been a lot of support, you know, to those businesses here in town, and, and I think that if, you know, as, as a, as a council, you know, in a town, if we're, you know, willing to, you know, do that, make that kind of outreach, I think it's super important. I think we should go ahead and do it.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Do we need one?
You don't need one, though.
I got kind of a silly question.
Yes, ma'am.
Do any of these picnic tables have holes in the middle that you can put an umbrella through?
No.
Okay.
Real big?
We, we, I bet we can make that happen.
Well, if I, if I got one, if I had a restaurant, I think I'd, I'd drill a little hole.
Drill a hole in it?
Yeah.
We, we, we'll work, yeah, for a small fee, we can make anything, yeah.
We got the water board drilling holes? We got Nancy drilling holes?
There you go. And, and I just have one other thing. While we've been here, I was notified that Superintendent Whittaker's mother passed away tonight, so I just wanted to make sure you were all there.
Sorry to hear that.
Thank you.
Any comments from the, go ahead, Billy?
Kind of request something that a lot of staff here at Town Hall, we've been looking at Town Hall in general, landscaping, and we've been kind of putting it off, I think, for about a year, but I think we're going to have to really either look into having someone come in and do it, or.
Work as a group to kind of tackle that. We have, it was laid out in more of a high-maintenance layout, and we're, we're looking to kind of, I don't know, reduce that footprint and the maintenance along with that. And so just kind of asking your blessing to go out and look at some options and bring them back to you, and so we can kind of spruce up Town Hall.
To be honest with you, I think one of our biggest things that we're looking at are those, I don't even know what those green things are out there. You know, they're, they're almost impossible to trim. Quite honestly, I'd like, if it was me, I'd like to take a backhoe and let those things out there and replace them with something that's a little bit easier to maintain and looks a little nicer, so.
How about those steel I-beams out there?
That's your guys' choice. Some people call them artwork, and some people call them steel I-beams.
Somebody got some money for that.
Yeah. I don't know the story behind those, to be honest with you. That was long before my time.
If we were a steel town, they'd probably be interesting, but I don't know.
Yes. I don't even believe we own them, do we?
They were deaccessed from the Indianapolis Museum of Art.
That's what it was. I knew there was something.
Mr. President, I, I had gotten contacted today, as a matter of fact, from an individual that was requesting us to notify a homeowner about some mowing issues, so that, I told him about the court code violation officer, you know, we were going to be talking about that today. So, so people are, are trying to, you know, make sure that the town's looking good. I also received an email from a, from a Mike and Joe Gray in recognition of some outstanding work that Rob Roberts and his wife had done. And in the interest of time, I'm not going to go through and read that, but just know that we have, you know, not just Rob, but probably a lot of employees around Danville who, you know, go above and beyond to, to serve and, and, you know, help their, their fellow, fellow man. And then did contact Will this week about just some questions on that.
Anybody else?
I just want to thank Will and Kelly, she's not here, from the chamber, for helping put on a very successful blood drive, what, two weeks ago? We use Bostick Gym, some of the, that I know pretty close, put it all together, and because the one at the school was canceled and the, you know, they're needing blood, so I just want to thank her. All your, Mark, thank you too, so. I didn't do anything. She did it all.
Anybody have any reports on any of the meetings they've gone to? Planning, redevelopment, buzz, anything? Okay, I have that letter from those people. It's very complimentary to Rob Roberts. These people are having a hard time. They're physically incapable of doing it, and if they did try to do it, it would take a long time, and Rob was so kind to help them put everything away. I have a letter I'd like to put in Rob's file.
Yes, sir.
And we'd like to thank Rob for that. Also, the head of the hospital, Kevin Spears, has also given a pretty good accolade to Rob and the Hamlet's crew and the fire crews. They're doing such a great job in the town, and I think that's commendable as well. And I commend the police for keeping everybody calm. I am smiling, you know? So anything else from anybody? Next thing would be the claim docket. Any comments from the council? Do I have a motion to approve the claim docket?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Do you want to take the vote?
Tom Pato.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Greg Van Lier.
Aye.
Okay. There are no other comments tonight? I'd like to make a motion, or have somebody make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Close to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, have a second. Everybody okay on that?
Yep.
Thank you.